Hey Brian.
You know, I don't like this about the King Street Jail.
Those doors should be open. Hello. Call the meeting of Monday, July 2nd, City Council meeting, call it to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Moreno?
Here.
Councilman Benson? Press your button. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Carson? Councilwoman Teeter?
Here.
Button, sir?
Got it. I'm trying to get it.
I don't know, they've been sitting there.
Is it flashing?
They keep getting moved around.
Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman McAldoney?
Present.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, please let the record show that Councilwoman JD Carson is the only council member not with us tonight, and we excused her at the last meeting. So she will be absent the entire evening. First item on the agenda is to go into an executive session. Do I have a motion, Mr. Moreno?
Move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) (B) for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning executive sessions and the city council relationships.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Motion of second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And the next... we'll be out in an hour. The meeting will start at 6:30, and then we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
You do that so well.
All right. I heard protests except one session.
Tough guy.
How you doing? I'm just waiting to make sure that they're ready.
I had to tell me if you could give a little help.
Not the biggest fan of it.
An hour!
Hour.
So, uh, Mason?
So far, so good.
All right.
I played with it a bit for a bit today. It's... I like the aggregated information. It's... and it's nice to edit minutes and all that stuff.
Yeah, we're up. Good. So... No? Yes.
Okay, let's finally begin. Interesting crowd this evening.
Yes.
I'll call the meeting back to order of July 2nd. Before we went into executive session, we opened the meeting and took the roll. So I would now invite the staff to go around, have the audience introduce themselves, please.
June Younger, Commerce City Historical Society.
Troy Younger, Commerce City Historical Society.
John Gummert.
CJ Gummert.
Joanne Stevenson, Commerce City Historical Society.
Tracy Snyder, Commerce City Historical Society and QCI.
Deborah Bolot, Commerce City Historical Society and QCI.
Esther Hall, Commerce City Historical Society.
You want to say what your name is?
Anderson.
Rogan.
Jan Dean.
Ashley Collins.
Kristy Douglas, Commerce City Historical Society.
Sandy Toland.
Ken Connell, Adams County.
Casey Hayes, Commerce City Historical Society.
Randy Webb, What the Frack, Arapahoe.
Pat Dunn, What the Frack, Arapahoe.
Cliff Wilmung.
Katie Bacon.
Jody Buckey.
Pam Sfratler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Darlene Muniz, Member of Commerce City Historical Society.
Teresa Muniz, Commerce City Historical Society.
Jean Lefel, Commerce City Historical Society, Commerce City Citizens for Recycling, Commerce City Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Founder of the Commerce City Cars Club. Thank you.
Joy Bishop, Historical Society.
Trista Rex.
Eleanor.
April Welch.
Don James.
David Foster, QCI.
Marty, I'm just here to observe.
Maria Gonzalez, QCI.
Good evening. Dina Martinez with time to change community corrections in QCI.
Sandy Gonzalez, and I'm here with my husband.
Rich Gonzalez, QCI.
Delilah Collins, QCI.
Paul Workman, Planning Division.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Larry Wilk, Police Department.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you all and welcome. I would like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and please keep in your prayers all the families that have lost their homes and their lives in the fires in Colorado, being that 4th of July is just a couple of days away and we have a fire ban and everybody needs to be careful, even the city with our fireworks program. So please keep in mind that during the moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation. I would ask if there are representatives from the Parks and Recreation Department to come up to the podium and I will read the proclamation. Whereas, play is a valuable part of a child's healthy development and is a critical factor in the overall well-being of children as well as people of all ages. And whereas, a productive, healthy, and physically fit child becomes a socially competent and proactive adult. And whereas, children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance. And whereas, uninstructed, unstructured, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on the decline nationwide and it is important to reverse that trend. And whereas, the City of Commerce City acknowledges children are one of our most important resources, therefore we must ensure safe and accessible play spaces for all children. And whereas-
Casey Hayes, Commerce City Historical Society.
Randy Webb, What the Fracker Apojo.
Pat Dunn, What the Fracker Apojo.
Cliff Wilmung.
Katie Bacon.
Jody Buckey.
Okay, Pam Sfratler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Darlene Muniz, Member of Commerce City Historical Society.
Teresa Muniz, Commerce City Historical Society.
Jean Lefel, Commerce City Historical Society, Commerce City Citizens for Recycling, Commerce City Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Founder of the Commerce City Cars Club. Thank you.
Joy Bishop, Historical Society.
Trista Rex.
Eleanor.
April Welch.
Don James.
David Foster, QCI.
Marty, I'm just here to observe.
Maria Gonzalez, QCI.
Good evening, Dina Martinez with time to change community corrections in QCI.
Sandy Gonzalez, and I'm here with my husband.
Rich Gonzalez, QCI.
Delilah Collins, QCI.
Paul Workman, Planning Division.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Larry Wilk, Police Department.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you all and welcome. I would like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and please keep in your prayers all the families that have lost their homes and their lives in the fires in Colorado, being that 4th of July is just a couple of days away, and we have a fire ban, and everybody needs to be careful, even the city with our fireworks program, so please keep in mind that during the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation. I would ask if there are representatives from the Parks and Recreation Department to come up to the podium, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas, play is a valuable part of a child's healthy development and is a critical factor in the overall well-being of children as well as people of all ages, and whereas, a productive, healthy, and physically fit child becomes a socially competent and proactive adult, and whereas, children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, and whereas, uninstructed, unstructured, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on the decline nationwide, and it is important to reverse that trend, and whereas, the City of Commerce City acknowledges children are one of our most important resources, therefore, we must ensure safe and accessible play spaces for all children, and whereas, the City promotes children as well as people of all ages to spend time outside at parks, trails, and playgrounds with family and friends, and whereas, the City of Commerce City will join Playful Cities USA in celebrating Play Day by hosting a free family fun zone at the annual Fourth Fest Celebration, July 4th, at Dixport and Goods Park. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 4th, 2012, as a Play Day in the City of Commerce City, and encourage all residents to participate and do their part in promoting active living and healthy lifestyles for our youth. Mr. Mackel Downey.
Would move that we pass the proclamation.
Mr. Moreno.
Second motion.
Motion is second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. If you'll join me down front, we will give the proclamation to Carolyn Keith. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation at the Historical Society, and I would invite the representative for the Historical Society that's going to make the presentation to come forward, or all three of them, come up to the podium or wherever, if you're going to use the computer over there, and make your presentation to the council.
My name's Joanne Stevenson. I'm the President of the Commerce City Historical Society, and I want to thank you for letting us come today and give you this presentation, and for all the other support that you've given us along the way, and Deborah's going to do PowerPoint, but she has a handout also, so I will let her do that, and if you need any, if you have any questions, just ask.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Deborah Bollock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. You have received already our business plan, and I have also given you some packets this evening of our financial statements and brochure from the Colorado History Preservation. Our vision for the Commerce City Historical Society is to preserve the Commerce City area history. Our vision, whoops, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit history organization. We were founded in 2009. We are currently, as you know, leasing a building from the city at 7450 Highway 2, and it has its storage right now. Everything that we took out of the dog track is in there, so we have it pretty well packed. We have the capability of drawing people in our community, which we have done, and I think you've attended some of the events that we've had. The community is excited about sharing their history, and we must continue this. Our mission is to have a museum and welcome center that all residents can visit, and where we can accurately collect, illustrate, and preserve the history of Commerce City area. We will make historical records accessible to the community and encourage the preservation of historical buildings. Museum goals for the present is the Denver Black Senior House and the Denver Black Junior House. Denver Black Senior House is located at 7240 Monaco Street, built in 1937, and the Denver Black Junior House is 6526 East 72nd Place, and it was built, actually, that was built in 1953. And that's a picture of the Senior House and a picture of the house on 72nd. Our museum goals for the future is to have a Mile High Kennel Club area museum. We have already retrieved the memorabilia out of the dog track. We have a couple more things to get this weekend, and we really have enough items from that to have a museum. We also have a historic house right west of the dog track, which is, was built in 1892. Some of you have been in it. That house in itself is a museum. She has things that are over 100 years old in there displayed right now. The historic Johnson Dairy, which is north of the Mile High Kennel Club area, and where Al Klein lives on 64th Avenue, that was also a homestead early in our history, and that belonged to the Swanson family. So just in that area, that is also a historic area, along with Derby, and then Adam City is also historic in our city. Programs, current and things that we want to do in the future, tours and storytelling to elementary schools. As you know, we did our coloring book this year, and it was a very big success, and we want to continue on that trend. We want to develop a high school history club, and we want Prairie View High School and Adam City High School to be involved with this, and our goal is to get younger children involved, because that's how we're going to sustain our Historical Society. Adult writing classes to record their history, senior lunches and history talks. We've already done one of these. We just did one a few weeks ago. Joanne Stevenson took us through Adam City area, where she grew up, and we had a bus full of seniors, and it was a great time. History bus tours, newsletters. We currently have a newsletter every quarter. We want to do city news flyers, where we actually have a welcome center, and people can come up and pick up news articles in flyers. Founder's Day, July 8th, a Derby walking tour and lunch. We have PowerPoint presentations to give to organizations and businesses. The Northern History Committee, we have established to make sure we don't lose the history of the city that's happened in the last 20 years up in the north. Education programs, the history club. We want to develop a history curriculum for the second graders on the history of Commerce City. School history presentations and museum tours, where the children can actually come into Derby and do tours. Summer history camp, coloring book distribution every year to the second graders. Our events that we've had, our Gene Klein Angel Award Luncheon, Annual Commerce City Memorial Day Parade, Annual Founder's Day Celebration, community outreach events, the Annual Pioneer Picnic, the annual year-end review, donors reception, and a lot of you attended that last year. We had that at the Refuge Visitor Center. The Annual Commerce City Christmas Lights Bus Tour. We want to do a Central City Bus Tour, just as a fundraiser. Ladies Tea and Tour of the Historic Baki House. Alumni reunion events, we hope to do in Derby, and historic homes tours, and Derby Dolls Roller Derby fundraiser. This is, there is a roller derby organization in Commerce City, and they do fundraisers for nonprofits, and we want to do one of those. Some of our crafts and community events that we've had are craft sale in Derby, yard sales, holiday wreath and basket sales. We want to do an antique roadshow in Derby, where people come in and they bring their antiques and get it appraised, and that is a fundraiser, where some of the profits that the people pay to do that go to the Historical Society. Plant sale, Commerce City Historic Cookbook Sales, gift shop, where we will sell books and cups and hats and t-shirts, things like that. A welcome center, a place to visit and get information. We have made money on some of this stuff already, and you can see by the papers that I have given you on our financial statement that we can make some money with these things. So our revenue sources are gift shop, book sales, cards, et cetera, museum fees, brick program, we want to sell bricks with names on it when we are able to build a museum, and we're already getting those pavers out of the dog track. We're picking them up this Saturday. Social function fees, memberships, we intend to have as many people in the community as possible as members and volunteers, and within the first year that we organized, we had over 100 members. Individual donations, Commerce City Preservation Endowment Foundation, ballot initiative possible to create a preservation tax or a history tax, establish a city history board to do landmark designations in Derby and the rest of the city, establish a historic district, Old Town Derby, and need, we need the city to be a partner to be able to do this. So just in the things that I've mentioned, our planned income would be $25,500, which you have that outlined in your business plan, and our planned expenses were, was $19,150. We also have grants that we've received money from, the Quality Community Foundation, the Denver Foundation, SCFD, we are eligible this year to apply, and we will be doing so, urban renewal money, CDGB money, Suncor Foundation, the Colorado Preservation Grant, a Key Bank grant, we've received those, and a lot of the banks just in the local area do have grants available for nonprofits. Tetra Tech has given us money, State Historical Fund, and we're researching other grant options. The historical, State Historical Fund, this fund awards grants to public and nonprofit organizations to preserve Colorado's architectural and archaeological treasures for public benefit. In 1990, the people of Colorado made a landmark decision legalizing limited stakes gaming, with the condition that nearly a quarter of these tax revenues help protect Colorado's heritage. So the state, by this election, then the state developed a historical fund to distribute these public funds statewide to preserve historic buildings, sites, structures, and districts. And we have a representative who has called me, and they're meeting with us Thursday morning from the State Historical Fund, and they want to know what Derby is all about. They want to see Derby, and he's meeting us at 8:00, and I would like possibly a city representative to join us on that, because this is a place we could get some funds from. From 1993 to 2011, they have awarded over $176 million in public funds and over 3,000 projects over 64 counties, and you have this brochure in front of you. Not everybody has it. Mr. Mayor, you have it. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you have it, and I think I gave one to Mr. Mackel Downey. I can get more copies, but I didn't have one for everybody. So we intend to apply for a grant. Like I said, we have a walkthrough on July 5th, and in order for the city to start getting funds through this entity, we'll have to become a city-certified local government. Then you will be able to do tax credits, grants, et cetera. There's economic development opportunities. The book that you have in front of you is called The Economic Power of Heritage in Place, and many cities have received funds, so many houses that have been preserved through our state, that's how it happened. They have acquisitions, they have tax money, or they have money to fix the buildings up, they have money to, available for tax credits. And we also want to attend a training in October to educate ourselves more in this process. How are we going to market? By newspaper ads, Northern Association of Museums pamphlet, you also have that attached to your paperwork I gave you. There are over probably 75 local museums in Colorado, and this, they have a pamphlet, and we could be in this pamphlet, which would give us that exposure. Social media, we already have Facebook, email, Twitter, a website, and we would like to partner with the Commerce City website, maybe have a link on your website. Through our newsletters, our presentations, mailers, brochures, through our programs and events, networking with other museums, signs, possibly Channel 8, and we would like to do some strategic planning with the city. We believe that we can establish an active plan. We see a new beginning in Derby, and there hasn't really been any activity, so to speak, of in Derby for a long time. As we do this, we will pull in other people and businesses. We see the value of our history, and the city will benefit. We have been successful in all of our programs and events. Our board is sustainable. We have long history in Commerce City, and we can pull people into events. We know a lot of people in the city, and I think you've seen that with some of our fundraisers and some of our events that we've had already. You have also in your package a timeline of the Commerce City Historical Society that you can look through. I won't go through all that. So are there any questions?
Great presentation, by the way. Council have any questions for Deborah? Mr. Moreno?
Deborah, thank you and the rest of the members of the Historical Society for putting so much work into this presentation. One of the things that I found the most interesting that you didn't necessarily cover in here, but we saw in the report, was how often local governments partner with Historical Societies.
Right.
And it's not out of the ordinary whatsoever for us to work together, for us to preserve property, for us to support you in terms of operating and that kind of thing. So I, that was one of the things that I thought should be made clear, is how often and how normal it is for cities to partner with Historical Societies.
It is. If you call any city, they're probably going to say that they somehow support or fund a Historical Society, and a museum.
Thank you.
Mr. Bollock?
Yes, yes, and your profit and loss statement on the last page, where it's supposed to come out equal, you have $2,8964, and then you have the $7,19282. Could you explain that? Usually that offsets each other, as it did in all the lines previous.
Because we had outstanding expenses, right? This one versus this, I think is what he's, or this here.
This is a reconciliation, a bank reconciliation that you're looking at.
Okay.
And so there were outstanding items.
Yeah.
So...
And so they don't match, because at the end of the year, we had outstanding items.
Okay, so your balance as of right now is $7,19282?
That was in December. Our balance today was $6,700.
Okay.
And you're going to get an updated statement from January through May. Joanne's going to send that to you.
Thank you.
In the next couple of days.
Seeing no one else, I just want to thank you all for coming in tonight, and being a member of the Historical Society myself, I really have to applaud you for the work that went into your business plan, and I think you're making a lot of strides in becoming an organization that'll move forward and stick with the community for a long time to come. So thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Do you have something further? Mr.? Okay, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick note for the benefit of the City Council and the members of the public. The city currently has the black property under an option agreement. City Council is scheduled to have a discussion about that option agreement and whether City Council wants to exercise that option. wants to exercise that option on July 16. That was why the Historical Society's presentation tonight seemed timely, so you would have this information in advance of your discussion in two weeks.
Okay, and would you please make sure that we have a representative that can be there for that tour with the Historical Society from the city's end, from staff member?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is another presentation from Quality Community Initiative. Will the representative come forward to make that presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before I introduce the members of the Quality Community Initiative, just wanted to say a couple of things. Council created, the previous council created a charter for the Quality Community Foundation to look at the long-range financial plan for the city and the projected revenues and try and figure out how to make the two meet in a way that would eventually improve living in Commerce City and would also keep up with the growth. And so 30 members of our community, businesses, nonprofits, residents, all kinds of folks have been getting together since November of last year and studying these items, going over the data, asking tough questions, and trying to figure out how to come up with a strategy that they can bring back to council. Tonight, they're here to present to you because their charter expired as of June 30th, and so they're here to tell you, give you a recommendation and tell you what they've done so far. Present from the group right now is co-chairs David Foster and Maria Gonzalez. We also have Mr. Dino Martinez, Rich Gonzalez, and Ms. Delilah Collins. And I just want to take one very brief moment to say, to express our gratitude to the members of the, to all the members of the Quality Community Initiative for their dedication and their commitment to fulfilling their charter, and also to work together to eventually make Commerce City a better place to live in. And with that said, I just want to pass it on to, to Mr. Foster and Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Well, good evening. Thanks for having us, David Foster and of course, Ms. Gonzalez, and we're glad to be here, and I'm honored that Ms. referred to me as Mr. Foster and Maria as Ms. Gonzalez. I hope that he gets in the habit of referring to us in such a fashion, that would be a nice change of pace for Ms. First, we do want to thank the many people who have spent about the last seven or eight months volunteering their time, many residents, business owners, community folks, stakeholders, and also a great amount of credit goes to your staff. Ms. has been a huge asset to this committee, as well as many others in your, in your city, and I'm not going to name them all because I will surely miss several. And again, we are indebted to their time and their talents in endeavoring to really give us as much information as we have been seeking as it relates to understanding the needs, desires, and, and opportunities that the city will afford its residents. And for those folks in attendance tonight who don't have one of the PowerPoints that you all have, they are online, and I would encourage people to go online and look at our PowerPoint because again, a lot of time and energy has been put in to this presentation. So QCI's purpose, you have really narrowed down to three very concise bullets up there. Really, it's about infrastructure, and when we talk about infrastructure for the city, we talk about it in terms of those kind of community facilities, be they rec centers, golf courses, roads, sewer, you know, storm sewer and water facilities, and all of the things that really make up a community. And we've studied the needs of the community in great depth. We've done so by not only reaching out to your staff, but we've begun the process of really reaching out to the community. We've done so at a large community gathering in the northern range just about 10 days ago. We'll do that again in early August at another one of your terrific community forums, and we will be endeavoring to survey many of your residents to continue to find out more of their interests, their needs, their desires, what they want to see in their communities. So we'll begin a survey process, a pretty comprehensive survey process. Again, we're hoping that you extend our charter, we're making a few assumptions tonight, we're hoping as volunteers you'll continue to allow us to work on your behalf, and endeavor, and we will be surveying the community beginning in August. And ultimately, what we're hoping to do is present a recommendation back to you as the city council as to ways in which we can as a community, as stakeholders, as businesses, figure out a way to meet your community's long-term goals. So I'm going to whip through these, these slides because we're not going to go into any great detail tonight, but you can see, and you already know, that these are very complicated issues. And these are complicated issues because they deal with a lot of revenue, they deal with expenses, they deal with ongoing operations, they deal with, you know, some of the infrastructure issues that people generally don't know or want to know about, but that without, we are in pretty dire straits in a community. And so you'll see the, and again, I'm not going to go into any detail here, but these are historic revenues, and you know, part of our analysis is to determine what you as a city have generally received as revenues so that you can project the kinds of dollars that you'll have available for capital infrastructure. And so we've, we've taken a look at your historic revenues, and then we've dealt with some of your population and city expenditures over the last decade to determine whether or not, or how your population and your revenues and expenditures have kind of stayed in balance. And then we've looked at some anticipated revenues and expenditures, we've estimated over the course of the next decade how those things are going to play out, and you can see, we, we are not scientists as it relates to expectations and revenue and expenditure forecasts. We've identified a whole bunch of high and low and medium expectations of revenues and expenditures. And so it leads us to the issue of kind of operations and capital improvements. It takes a certain amount of money just to keep things up and running, and then it takes an increment over that in order to make the necessary capital improvements to really continue to make, you know, Commerce City a world-class city that I think everybody shares that same vision. And so many of the questions that we've been asking are, you know, what are the existing revenues, what are the existing expenditures, what are the anticipated expenditures and revenues, and what is the increment that's going to be required to pay for the capital expenses? Because we need to identify what those capital needs are going to be. And you can see here in a big, big global way, if, if everybody, you know, and these were kind of estimates that were created by every different department, and we've spent a lot of time going into the minutia of these numbers, but you've got, you know, about a decade's worth of capital expenses that, that near $300 million, and there is no way with your existing revenues that you would have an opportunity to pay for some of these, these needs and desires of the community. You'll see that you have about $40 million within which to use to pay for some of these things. And again, we're not suggesting that all of these things need to be paid for, and I don't want anybody on council to believe that. We're still kind of in our investigative process. So I want to turn it over to Maria to take it from there.
So as you can see, there's so much that needs to be done and so much that needs to be addressed, and it's very hard to, to just come into you and provide you with the solution of how are we going to come up with almost $300 million to solve so many of our community needs? And everybody wants the best for our community, but we're here to tell you about some of the lessons learned so far. We realize that there's 30 of us in this committee, and there's so many different backgrounds, and we all decided that we wanted to take it slow and understand exactly where we're going, and based on the information that we've been receiving from every one of those city departments, make sure that we understand the data, because eventually we have to educate the community, we have to bring the community up to date on what is needed, and what is expected, and what is the vision of a better Commerce City for all. We have to work with businesses, educating them on what is realistic, what is the expectations as a better community. And so that takes some time, it's not from one day to the next that we can just show everybody a beautiful plan and have everybody walk on board. So we, we are deciding that we need a little bit more long pace to make sure that everybody's on the same page. That is a figure of a dollar here that we're trying to stretch, that if you're just looking at it as a household, it's, the economy is really bad, and trying to stretch a dollar to every need in a household is very hard to meet with the dollar that is received. And so that graph just gives you a brief description about the education that we have to bring to everybody in the community, business owners, residents, everybody as far as, you know, what is what the government money that is received, what, where every single one of the, those funds go to, and how, I mean, where are we going to get the money to, to build that beautiful city that we all want and deserve? So that's, that's a graph that we're going to be showing the community if you can, let us continue the research and the outreach that we feel that it's needed to, to come up with a positive solution. We realize that everybody is important in this community, business owners, residents, everybody have to tell us how they feel and how do they want to be included and committed to our ultimate goal. And we are going to take a few ideas and from, based on the meetings that we have, some of the things that we want to do right now is the next step of asking you for the extension, if you allow us to continue to do the work, that'll be July 2012, and then having the outreach, be at the outreach in August so that we can present some of the ideas that we have to the community and continue to do, we are developing a survey that will go to everybody in the city, and we'll be tabulating data, and based on that survey, we'll be doing some focus groups, depending on the issues that residents feel that they need more information or want to be more active participants about. We anticipate finalizing the results in November 2012, and then bringing a recommendation to you, city members, city council members by December of 2012. Some of the things so far that we've been thinking about of possible considerations are, you know, new improvement districts, stormwater and utility fees, employment head tax, property tax increase, sales tax increase, and these are things that are not very popular. And these are things that we, every resident need to know and every business need to be familiar with, and how we all need to come up with solutions to bring those $300 million that we need so that our city could be up to date, and every area of every department needs. So, so far, those are some of the things that we have considered, and based on the results that we get from the survey and the focus groups and the outreaches that we do, we hope to bring you some updates as well as we continue to have those discussions, and of course, hopefully come up with the best solution or recommendation to you by Are there any questions?
Does council have any questions? Mr. Mackel Downey?
Thank you both for, for the update tonight, I've been eager to hear how progress is going, and I think you touched on, in your comments, what I sort of knew going in, right? This is no small subject to crack, and I, and I think, in talking to some of the folks from the QCI committee who were present at the reunion north range outreach, and, you know, the dollar bill that was available, and just sort of getting some feedback in real time from folks as they were seeing some of that imagery for the first time. I mean, I know we've used that graphic before, but it's one of those things that hasn't necessarily made its way widely around the community, and I think anytime somebody sees that and they look at that small 1.73% of that dollar bill that's coming back to the city, and the fact that we actually have more of our tax dollars going to the water district than we do the city, causes heads to scratch. And so, you know, when you look at the, the overall capital needs as you guys have been studying, it's, it's pretty daunting. Sure, you can pay the bills and keep the lights on, but doesn't mean you're going to get new roads, new parks, new trails, new other things that are necessary as this community seeks to grow into what we all want it to be. So thank you for jumping into the deep end and immersing yourself in this information. I think the one thing that I think is critical is that the effort continue, and I'm eager to see how the QCI committee envisions helping to educate the community at the same time as it looks to collect more data through your survey and through your focus groups. The one thing that I've, I feel like I've been obsessed with since getting on council is how do I take all this information that I've sort of learned in the short time that I've been on council, because I know all kinds of stuff that I never knew before, but how do I, how do I help my neighbors understand that same thing and have the same appreciation for what I now have in my head? Because I know that if they did, we'd have a very different discussion about how we go forward. And I don't know, and I'm eager to see what you guys can come back with, I don't know how we cut through the noise that is the world today and make this important, because it's all too easy to get, to see people get tuned out by the tenor of discussion about politics on the national level, and the fact that we all have a real-world day job and family life that, you know, exists that we have to pay very close attention to, but the reality is, you know, what's the statement, all politics are local? And, I mean, the most local are those things that impact our community. And so how do we help people see the importance of understanding these things, not just hearing that we're talking about new revenue and new taxes and sort of having the, the soundbite, you know, kick in that says, no new taxes, right? The reality is, there's stuff that we all want and need, and somebody somehow is going to have to pay for that, and it's not going to come from outside this community necessarily. So how does that, how do we solve for that in a way that, I think as you touched on in a couple of slides, is equitable? And, you know, if we do have to look at reducing services, that we balance that with where we invest. So you guys have no small task, and it's, it's why we wanted to extend the, the brain trust, if you will, to, to this committee, when we, we hit similar points in our discussions that said, hey, we've got to look at this more creatively, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for your presentation. I've been waiting for this for a while because we've had this on the agenda several times at the beginning of the year, and, you know, it comes to, I had here, it already passed in June, and we have had several things come up before us, well, one of the, one of the big things is stormwater utility fees, and I'm not yet sold on that. And how do I, how do I present that to the residents of Commerce City? To me, I feel like that's a hidden tax, and trying to really focus on things, I, I believe that as a city, we need to practice best practices when it comes to contracts and all, and just be all on the same page when it comes to spending our taxpayers' money. So, you know, I understand you guys want to have an extension here, I would like to see those dollars spent as far as you guys go out to the public, let the public decide on what they would want to do, because as far as having focus groups, that's good if we, you know, if you guys were on, on track from that, from the beginning of the year up until now, but being that, we wanted to hear from you guys, because we're going to a budget period here in a couple of months, that's, that's going to be really big for 2013, and it would be nice to hear that prior to our budget meeting. It seems like that's not going to happen, it's just going to push everything back. So if there's any way that you guys could streamline this and maybe put it more out to the public to get their opinion on it, maybe do some short series, I know you want to do like a... I know you want to do like up to six meetings or so. Maybe you can come down to three or so and focus really primarily on the residents and put this out there so residents could see that. I know we have a newsletter that we send out every month. We could put some of that in the newsletter and hit that, you know, every month, what you guys are trying to get through to the residents. Because it's something that they need to see, not to hear. And I know we only have two outreaches. But that ongoing attention to detail would be really good if you guys could hit that on a monthly basis with our newsletter. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
Well, thank you for your service and the service of the other members on the QCI. Obviously, this is, this is not a small issue that we've asked you to address and to research. And I know a lot of work has gone in to actually looking at the ins and outs of the city budget and what it actually takes to fund some of the projects and what we're going to have to do in the future to address some of those needs. I don't think it's unreasonable for you to ask for more time in order to do that and to do exactly what Mr. Douglas is suggesting is to reach out to the community, get their feedback on some of this. Because I think it's so important that none of these solutions come from the city council, that they come from the community in setting what our priorities are and what we need to address and what the community wants us, wants to see us invest in. So very appreciative of your service. It's a thankless job. You're obviously not getting paid. You're volunteering your time and completely supportive of your request.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock.
I also want to thank you for your time, your work and your diligence. And going off on another tangent, I guess I'm going to say, take all the time you need because this was an issue that came before council. And that's why we have the QCI because this was an issue that us as a council said that, yeah, we could make decisions, but how do you first fund for $300 million and second, where are you going to get the funds for it? And coming from council, it will always sound like to the residents that it's something that we're dictating. Coming from the citizens and businesses and everything, it's something that you have actually taken time to look at and say, this is something the whole city has to wrap their brain around because this isn't money that's just going to fall out of the sky. And if we even look at it over a 10-year period, that's an extra $30 million a year for 10 years that we're going to have to find somewhere. My thoughts on it are, it's something we couldn't do in six months. So I wouldn't expect you guys to be able to do it in six months. And I'm kind of surprised that you put yourself on a December timeline. I would have thought that you would have given yourself even more time because of the fact that this is something that is definitely, is going to impact every citizen of Commerce City. Some of them will have to take their expectations and dial them down a few notches. And some of them are going to say to themselves, maybe we do need to pay more if we want the things that we really want to make this a quality community for a lifetime or just an okay community for a lifetime. I'm not satisfied with okay. So if you need more time than December, I would say to you right now, don't limit yourself to just a December timeline. Ask for the time you need because after you do the surveys and the focus group, you're going to have to distill all this information. And I don't want you putting yourself on a timeline where you are rushing yourself. So, but this is strictly just my thoughts on it. But if you need more time, don't just make December your threshold.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Foster for your work on the QCI. And I've got to agree with everything that everybody's said up here. We need to raise $300 million. We have a $50 million budget in this city every year. Some hard decisions have to be made. And somebody's going to have to pay for these things to be built or any capital improvements. Taxes, you know, you mentioned property taxes, sales taxes, admissions taxes. I guess we could impose a fee without having an election, but if you're thinking about any kind of a tax, we're getting pretty close to the time to put something like that on the ballot for this fall, if that's a possibility. We need to hear about that and have it spelled out what the money's going to be used for. As Mr. Bullock said, people have to understand that these things don't come free. And we want this, these capital improvements to occur, we can't just go out and print the money. It's got to come from someplace. So, and as Mr. Moreno said and Mr. Bullock said, it's got to come, it needs to come from the citizens and not just from this council to get this done, to sell that to the people so that they will vote for something like that. I said, we can impose a fee, but I'm not going to do that unless we have some input from the citizenry. Yeah, we want to do this so that we can have these capital improvements. I don't, if there's some other way to go about it, I hope that you'll be able to figure that out. Because I certainly haven't been able to do that. It's going to cost money. And thank you again for your service. And I would certainly be for approving an extension of your charter at least through December of 2012 or until you feel you've accomplished your purpose. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Macaldonie.
This was actually from a prior comment.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to thank you very much for your hard work and efforts and the research that you put into this program, you know, in building our community to become a quality community foundation. Realizing that this was a very large task to take on, I feel confident that, I will agree with Mr. Bullock, that December is much too generous of an offer. I would think maybe even looking towards next spring, following up with that. You know, you need more time in order to accomplish those visions. And I don't really see that we're pressing for a specific deadline of some sort, but I just, I just want you to know that you've got my full support on that. And thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
I want to thank you both for coming in and all of your members, all 30 of them, the ones that are here and the ones that aren't here. I did have the opportunity to sit in on at least one of the QCI meetings and have separated myself from that because I think it's better for me to hear the information in a setting like this than to be involved with those meetings. And it is a tough task. I mean, with the economy the way it is, with a lot of people living on one income rather than the two that most people are used to, talking about increased and increasing taxes really sets a tone with them. And you do, you do get the benefit of those tax dollars in improvements. So you get what you pay for. However, you know, nobody, not anybody up here wants to see those taxes increased because of the impact it'll have on the residents. So we really need the residents to let us know what they'd like to see. And I can't appreciate more than the efforts that you guys are making to try to find out what the residents want so that it's done in a proper manner. And I will, I will say I'm ready for a motion for an extension. But before I ask for that, I want to make sure that you guys want to move forward with an extension to the December timeline.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're okay with the December timeline, recognizing that we might be back, you know, sometime before December based on what we get in terms of feedback from the community, seeking perhaps more time. This isn't, we're not trying to make a rush job out of this. And, you know, I think everybody's kind of mentioned the time and energy that's required for this process to really kind of take place. There's a lot of educating to do. So to the extent that we get feedback from the community that causes us to do, you know, some more in-depth analysis, it may take an extra month or two months and, you know, but at the same time, you know, we've got a bunch of volunteers who are showing up at 7:30 in the morning every third Friday. And, you know, they're terrific and asking them to continue beyond, you know, December is a big ask as well. So that's, that's our balancing job as well. So we're okay trying to live by this timeline. And if we need some more time, I think we've heard your message.
In addition, we're asking for $300 million. The longer we wait, that's in today's dollars. So if we continue to wait, you know, we need to be ahead of the game with our community. If we really, if everybody in the community envisioning our city to be the best community, the best city they could ever live in, you know, we have to be committed to what they're, what the residents are saying and listening to them and coming back to you as soon as possible because we've got to move on and we cannot be behind. I think Commerce City has let itself behind in some areas in the past and we can't allow that anymore. We need to be proactive and we need to work together. And I would like to, you know, leave a message that everybody needs to be included in this community. Everybody is a part of the growth plan of the city. And we want to welcome everybody to come back into our group and say, this is what we need and this is what we are committing to do. Because it's everybody's job, not just city council and not just our committee. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. And, you know, you're always welcome if you need more time to come back and ask for another extension. With that said, I'll ask if there's a motion. Mr. Macaldonie.
Yeah, I will make a motion to extend the charter of the Quality Community Foundation, or I'm sorry, the Quality Community Initiative Committee through December of this year. But with that, I just want to add one more comment. You know, one of the original concepts with this, the charter of this group was to have that date set to complement, to Mr. Benson's point, our budget discussion. And given that we're going to extend this, that's going to obviously have a final product that we would expect sometime after that August timeline. I think it would be important with this extension to not look, not look past the original goal, which was to have this committee help provide input for the council, for the budget planning that we're yet to undertake this year. So I would just suggest that as part of this extension, we formalize part of your work plan to be, whether it's participation in our study sessions that lead up to the budget planning process, whether we look at a weekend, like a Saturday joint planning discussion. At some point, we need to take an opportunity to get this body together with that body and mesh what you guys have been able to adjust so far because we do have some tough decisions to make relative to planning for the coming year. Certainly, we're not going to make any major changes that are going to have a substantive impact on revenue in the coming year. But I think we need to be able to have some of your input during that discussion to help inform, if that makes sense. The only other thing that I would add, and this is something that seems to have come up at each of our last several retreats, and that's just, it's the same thing we hear from the citizens, right? So anybody that talked to somebody at that Northern Range Outreach has heard the very same thing. There is a perception that we're sort of at the ceiling on taxes, right? Particularly for folks in the Northern Range. So to what extent is the QCI's work plan looking at trying to have discussions with those other entities to talk about what their plans are? My concern is that if we're planning around what the city needs in terms of capital investment and what we need to do in terms of revenue, and yet the school district is over here and the fire department is over here and the water is over here, all of whom we know are also going to be in similar positions. We know the school district has needs on both ends of town. We know the fire department has needs. I think one of the things that happened that got us to where we are now is that people weren't talking, right? Everybody had an individual plan and those plans have effectively converged to put us in the position we're in today. So I just, I want to make sure that as part of this sort of dialogue, that consideration is also there. I know that was a long extra comment on top of my motion, but important comments, I think.
If I just may take a moment to address the last part of your comment. Each one of the other jurisdictions, the two school districts and the water district have been invited. Two of the three are regular participate, but participants in the stakeholder group. And there have been discussions. They understand very well our need and they understand what the timeline is as of right now. However, there has not been any conversations yet about doing any joint, I mean, there is not a recommendation yet that has been formulated. And so there hasn't been any discussion about joining forces or going together in any way at this point. But they are part of the committee.
With the recent leadership changes at both school districts, the very recent in one case and not so recent in the other, I mean, that may be a good time to reintroduce that discussion.
I take, I get every opportunity I get.
Okay. And I know you're out there advocating. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. We need to stop with the discussion because I have a motion on the floor. Mr. Moreno.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, a motion and a second to allow the extension of the QCI charter through December 2012. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. I'll remind everybody that you have a three-minute window. And I noticed one on the list. The first one on the list, Mr. Moran, since you're here to speak on a public hearing, you will be called up to speak at the time of that public hearing so you won't come up during citizen communication. Therefore, the first person on the list will be Pam Sprattler. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Pam Sprattler, 70, 41 East 75th Place. I just want to thank Councilwoman Moreno for helping me with the problem for the last two weeks and also to find out what else we can do. Now they're taking the dogs out and they're walking them up and down the street. And we do have a pit bull. The people own a pit bull. So what do we do?
Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, Pam, for bringing that to our attention. I do recall in the staff report, and I don't know if Brian has seen this, but in the staff report, it stated that I believe the animal control officer had provided them a notice that they were out of compliance with that regulation in the city regarding pit bulls and that they were required to comply with the regulations. So essentially, do something about the dog, but I'm not positive. I'll defer to Brian.
Councilman Moran was correct. As part of city staff's intervention in the matter, the city's dog, animal control officer did cite the owner requiring them to provide documentation establishing the breed of the dog. If it is determined to be a pit bull, an additional citation would be issued because they would be in violation of city code.
Do we know when that documentation will come back regarding the breed?
I don't know the specific details in the notice that was given to the owner, but we can research that.
Okay, we'd appreciate it because like I said, now they're preying them up and down past our houses and that. And they've got two of them. And these dogs have tried to get through two fences already. I went out my door and they've been sitting on my front step, charging at me when I went out the door. We need to do something about these dogs.
Brian.
I'm sorry, I missed in the, in the city manager's report this evening. It does indicate that notifications required by July 6.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it again to our attention, Pam, and we'll keep working on it.
Thank you.
Sounds like our staff is on top of it, Pam. If you want to just continue to work with city manager McBroom, I'm sure they'll have some resolve in the short, short future.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Mayor Casey Hayes. And while he's making his way up, I just want to make sure that I recognize the fact that we have a former mayor with us this evening, Tracy Snyder, who was here earlier, is former mayor pro temp. And we have a former county commissioner Marty Pham here as well. So thank you for joining us this evening. Mayor, name and address, please.
Good day and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For purposes of the tape, my name is Casey Hayes. I live at 5350 East 66th Way in Commerce City, Colorado. And for those of you who are taking notes, the Union Pacific Railroad is 150 years old as of yesterday. And President Abraham Lincoln in 18... as of yesterday and President Abraham Lincoln in 1862 signed the proclamation that created the Pacific Railroad Act. So now you have a railroad that's running through your community and everything. I sympathize with the problems you have to wrestle with. Certain things are mandatory for you to do as a city. You have to provide for police, fire, not fire, but police and streets and parks, recreation administration and bonded indebtedness and that type of thing. But there are some things that are permissive and usually the permissive ones are the ones that money left over, but then you try fund that. So I wrestle with you and your heartache is to trying to fund all the things that come before you and some of them have to say no. I would like to tell a little story from me about Mayor Don Phelan. Don Phelan was mayor of Arvada years and years ago and when they was doing the budget, they low and behold found some money left over. So they thought, well, what do we do? Carry it over for the next year, saw it as a surplus, or shall we do something with the community? What they did was elevated and landscaped a little hill and they put a little temporary stage down at the bottom of it and the people sit on the grass of this hill and they watched some outdoor programs. Today, that has grown into the Arvada Community Playhouse and I'm sure some of you have attended plays there and have been very appreciative of the work that they've done in Arvada over the years. And it's really a cultural asset that the Arvada Playhouse is, not only to Arvada, but to our community and all the rest of us gathered around. So my emphasis in speaking in behalf of a historical society, I think it's something that will benefit the community, it's something also that preserves a legacy, a way of life that it was for people 30 and 40 years ago when this city was first being formed. And I think that's very important that we continue that legacy throughout. So that's why I urge you to do what you can to further the interests of the Commerce City Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening, Mayor.
Incidentally, when the railroad came through, it stopped just about at Hagan's Place on Sand Creek and the people in Denver climbed up on top of their second and third-story buildings with field glasses and watched the progress of the train coming into Denver. And this was about 1880 and I read this, Mr. Mayor, I didn't remember or anything like that. So that's why I bring it forth to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. That being, all of the folks on the citizen communication will move into the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item for further discussion and a separate vote? Mr. Bullock?
I'm prepared to make a motion on the consent agenda.
Go right ahead.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Macaldonie?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Let the city attorney please read the title.
Title of ordinance 1911 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the 2012 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Board, CATPA, grant award in the amount of $20,100 for cameras, administrative costs, overtime costs, and annual maintenance fees for PIPS system and 12 software and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance 1913, an ordinance amending the 2012 budget of the city of Commerce City by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $465,000 to be used for Fairfax Park renovations, which include a perimeter trail, landscaping, new shelters, tables, barbecue grills, trash cans, and a new parking lot and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance 1914 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the 2012 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $529,000 to be used for Fairfax Park renovations, which include a redesigned court area with two basketball courts, two tennis courts, two handball courts, improvements to three ball fields, and undergrounding power lines and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. That completes the consent.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title has been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Let the record show that the consent agenda has been approved eight to zero. And now we'll move on to our public hearings. First, we start with ordinance Z-900-12. I'll open the public hearing. And since resolution 2012-26 is associated with the rezoning ordinance, staff will make one presentation regarding both ordinance and resolution. Each item will be voted on separately. Staff, go ahead and make your presentation, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. As mentioned, there are two cases this evening. However, there'll be one presentation. There will be the need for two separate motions, one for each case. With that said, first case this evening is case Z-900-12 and the second is S-586-12. Subject property is located at 6955 and 6995 Brighton Boulevard. The applicant this evening is MBG Development and their request is to rezone and plat the property. Subject property is located just north of 69th Avenue and to the east of Dahlia Street. It currently has a PUD zoning designation. It's currently the site of the car trucking site, however, it was formerly the Scotty's Drive-In, I believe, which was a favorite of several locals just a few decades ago. The, the subject property is surrounded by residential and commercial just to the west and then unincorporated Adams County residential to the north. The subject property of this case has been highlighted with the yellow circle. The comprehensive plan does call this particular site out for commercial uses. And this is an aerial of the subject property. 69th Avenue to the south, Dahlia Street to the west, 70th Street to the north. Again, commercial, residential to the west and mostly unincorporated Adams County residential to the north. This is a site photo looking north along Dahlia Street from 69th Avenue. Currently, a fairly small landscape buffer and already improvements in terms of curb gutter, sidewalk, things of that nature. And this is a photo looking south down Dahlia Street, again emphasizing the existing site conditions. Back in May, the city's board of adjustment did approve a variance for a gas canopy setback. That variance was for 13 and a half feet from the Dahlia Street side in order to allow for feasible, safe development of the site and allow for emergency circulation of things like fire, police, ambulance, things of that nature. So again, the request this evening is to rezone the subject property from the current PUD zoning designation to the requested C3. The benefits to this is that it will remove the customized zoning on the property, eliminate some of those restrictions that are found in the current PUD, and it will also continue to allow for this proposed use. In terms of the plat, it will formally plat two lots for viable commercial development. The southern lot will be developed immediately and the northern lot, it will be available for future development. This is an image of the proposed site plan. Dahlia Street at the bottom of the image here, just to the west of the property. Again, Lot 1 to the south, one-story convenience store with fuel sales just to the north of that, two entrance and exit points onto and off of the property. The one furthest north will be a shared access between Lot 1 and Lot 2. These are some color elevations of the proposed building. Traditional CMU along the majority of the body of the building accented by more traditional brick treatment with faux windows along the elevations that will face both Dahlia and This is an image of the plat that's been submitted. Again, Lot 1 to the south for the immediate development. Lot 2 located just to the north for the future development, a shared recorded access easement between the two lots with access off of Dahlia Street. In reviewing the subject application, the planning commission evaluated the request against the approval criteria for rezoning. They determined that the proposed zoning is consistent with the comp plan, that the proposed development is compatible with the area of surrounding uses. The site is already adequately served by utilities. The proposed zoning will serve the surrounding neighborhood, particularly the residential uses as the convenience store proposed use, and that the, the property and the area has changed over the course of the last decade, that it, that it would be to the public's best interest to rezone it to the commercial designation as opposed to the current PUD. Planning commission went through a very similar exercise for the plat. The lot, the lots meet all of the C3 standards. There are two viable lots created for commercial development. There's no evidence that the plat violates any laws or regulations. There's minimal impact to the existing land. The plat complies with the city's standards and doesn't impose an undue burden on the surrounding properties and there are public services available. So with that, on June 5th of 2012, the planning commission voted five to zero to send a favorable recommendation to city council with no conditions for both of these applications. That would conclude the staff presentation for this evening. However, we're certainly available to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the staff before we move forward? Mr. Moreno?
Thank you, Mr. Workman. A couple of questions on the, the second lot. Obviously, that, that zoning designation will be changed over to, to C3 commercial as well. Can you give us an idea of what kind of appropriate uses under that zoning designation could maybe go there?
Absolutely. The, the C3 is a commercial zoning designation, so it would allow for anything from a drive-through restaurant to a coffee shop to a general retail to an office. The C3 is our most intense commercial zone district, so it really would allow for a variety of commercial uses on that property.
Great. And will there be any requirement for landscaping improvements along Brighton Boulevard on the property?
Yes, sir. As part of the development plan that has gone through the process, the applicant has actually done a pretty outstanding job of incorporating landscape buffer both along Highway 85 and along Dahlia Street to try and minimize any adverse impacts. In addition to that, the southern portion of the site that will be developed will be the new area for the retention pond and that will include drastic landscape upgrades to what's there today, sod, trees, grasses, shrubs, things of that nature.
Great. Considering that this use will likely attract a lot more traffic than, than the current truck sales that it was used for, do you anticipate, I mean, because that intersection is so difficult to navigate already, do you anticipate any issues with access to the site?
It was certainly a topic of conversation during our review and the, the good folks at the Public Works Department and the Fire District and the police folks did not feel that the, the proposed use created any additional unsafe scenarios for, for traffic in the area, given the shared access between the two lots. So there won't be any additional access in terms of the number. There's currently two accesses onto the property and there will continue to be. And it actually may help to improve circulation in that area, given that we're already locking in the access for that second lot as a shared access as well, so there won't be an additional access in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Is this going to be right in, right out off of Brighton, or Brighton Boulevard?
There actually won't be any access directly off of Brighton Boulevard onto the subject property. The only access for the property will be off of Dahlia Street. Just to the west is Dahlia Street. Again, there are two existing accesses onto the property. Currently, there is Highway 85 right-of-way located directly to the east. That is being reserved as right-of-way for any future improvements or expansions to the 85 corridor, so there will not be any access off of that right-of-way.
All right. And then the lot number two, is that going to be fenced off? Is it going to be any kind of landscaping around the area there of Lot 2, just to kind of help that out as far as cosmetics?
It's staff's understanding that at this time, it will remain with the, the asphalt that's on the northern half of the lot. However, the applicant has agreed to, and there are notes on the development plan, that that site will not be used for parking any vehicles, materials, outdoor storage, anything of that nature in the interim until that site develops. So it will be an empty lot until that site develops.
Is there going to be any lighting on the property as far as that Lot 2, just for security reasons?
At this time, there will not be. There's been none proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, I'll ask, is the applicant present?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Greg Moran from MBG Development is here this evening.
Good, then I can cross him off the list here. How are you this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Greg Moran with MBG Development, 1509 York Street, Denver, Colorado.
Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the staff's presentation?
Just probably to address a couple of items, just to make sure that council members know that we're aware of your, your concerns about the issue. We have agreed that if appropriately fenced off and controlled, we do have an interest in trying to do some type of seeding along the Highway 85 corridor. That road there doesn't do us any favors. It doesn't give us any opportunity for someone to, I just don't want anybody driving through the, the wrong side of my site, so to speak. As far as the access off of Dahlia, both of those accesses have been widened, so we can make sure that there is ample traffic that moves flows in and out of there. So to your point, we, we are cognizant of the traffic issues. Right now, we do have the shared access with the north lot, but I would believe in the future that there may be an opportunity to create another access off of 70th, which would, would create another flow of traffic up towards the north side and then that actually goes towards the north, towards the park and ride, so that part. To clarify on the, on the landscaping, and I think, you know, and not to say, the city was very insistent upon this and we appreciate that, we are adding approximately 20 trees to the site as well as 121 pieces of bushery, shrubbery, ground covers. So it will be significantly heavier and green than you see out there today. To your question, Councilman Douglas, we at this time would choose not to do anything on that site to the north because until we get a user, I don't want to go and spend a lot of money on landscaping and improving that property only for inevitably, the dollars I spent will be torn out within the first 15 minutes of my conversation with the, the new tenant. So we are anxious to try and get something on that site, but for right now, we're only ready to go with the south, south end of the site. We're very excited about this site. It's going to be a nice investment of over $2 million, just on the south side alone. And we're anxious to get this project underway.
See if there is any questions from the council for the applicant. Mr. Moreno?
No questions, just thank you for addressing some of those questions and it'll be a welcome addition and thanks for working on so diligently on a landscaping plan for that area.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only regarding this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve case Z-900-12.
We need to, we have to do the findings and recommendations.
Sorry, withdraw that motion. Move to approve the facts and findings of the planning commission regarding case Z-900-12.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion is carried. Now we can introduce the ordinance if you so desire. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance Z-900-12.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z-900-12. Will the city attorney read the title, please?
Title reads, an ordinance rezoning from PUD to C3 zone district. The property described in Exhibit A attached here to made a part hereof located at 6955 and 6995. and 6995 Brighton Boulevard, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, the ordinance has been introduced unanimously, eight to zero. Now we can take care of the resolution. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve Resolution 2012-26.
We need the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Sorry, I'm overeager tonight. Withdraw that motion. Move to approve the facts and findings of the Planning Commission regarding Resolution 2012-26.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Second, Matt.
Have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission regarding Resolution 2012-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we can take care of the resolution if so desired. Mr. Macaldonie?
Move to approve Resolution 2012-26.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Subdivision Plat in Case S-586-12."
Thank you. Motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll go into resolutions. First resolution, Resolution 2012-27. Staff has, does staff have anything to present to the Council on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, staff previously presented in an executive session and then again in a study session some background information regarding the potential demolition of the Dog Track property. We are here to answer any questions that Council may have. This is actually a resolution to provide the necessary funding to the Urban Renewal Authority to allow for the demolition of the Dog Track property.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only concerning this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion from the Council. Mr. Moreno?
No facts and findings this time, right? Move to approve Resolution 2012-27.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldonie?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Attorney, please read the title.
Title of the resolution reads, "Resolution of the City of Commerce City Authorizing the 2012 Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Commerce City and the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Let the record show, that's seven aye, one nay. Mr. Benson? Next item on the agenda is ordinance is on first reading. First, we have ordinance 1918. Staff have anything to present on this case to the Council? Mr. McBrough?
Mr. Mayor, this item again is related to the previous item, and again, it's a subject mayor that was presented to the City Council previously. We're happy to answer any specific questions Council might have about the project.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to ordinance 1918? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve ordinance 1918.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1918. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2012 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Own Encumbered Fund Balance in the General Fund for a Loan to the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof by the Urban Renewal Authority."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Go ahead, and the lights aren't blinking yet. If need be, you can call the roll. Let the record show, the ordinance is introduced, seven to one. Next item on the agenda, ordinance 1919, dealing with the extension of the franchise agreement with public service. Does the Council have any questions or concerns that they have not addressed previously? Mr. Macaldonie, your light's lit. Question? Mr. Bullock?
I'll move to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, would you like to do that? Ordinance 1919.
Yes, move to introduce ordinance 1919.
Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1919. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Okay, we'll start with our attorney, Greg. I didn't know that staff was going to have any presentation here, but if you would like to start, and then I'll follow up.
I have no presentation. Mr. Mayor, I did want to alert you to the fact that representatives of Public Service Company are here with us this evening in case you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gibson, would you like to come forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Preston Gibson. I'm an area manager with Xcel Energy. My address is 5460 West 60th Avenue, Arvada, Colorado. Want to tell you just very briefly, a few points about the franchise that we think are important for you to know. It's, I think, a significantly improved franchise from your perspective as compared to the franchise that you're currently operating under. And I also wanted to, this evening, introduce our attorney, Nadia Elmalak, in case you have any questions that I can't answer. So with that, just a few quick remarks. At the outset, I wanted to publicly thank your legal team, especially Greg Graham, for his very thorough review and negotiations on the agreement. I also want to thank Tom Aker, Greg Clements, and Darren Sterling and others for their work and their input on the agreement. This franchise agreement outlines certain terms and conditions regarding Xcel Energy's use of city streets, public utility easements, and other city property, generally subject to your permitting and inspection processes. As part of the franchise, we agree to remit to Commerce City a fee in the amount of 3% of the gross revenues that we receive as a surcharge from gas and electric customers in your city. We remit that check to you monthly, which in 2011 generated revenue to the city of little over $1.8 million. That's the franchise fees paid to the city. We also paid sales taxes in the amount of little over $1.9 million, use tax in the amount of $118,000, and property tax in the amount of little over $24,000. So with taxes alone, we paid over $2 million to the city last year, and then you can add franchise fees to that, which is about 1.8, little over 1.8 million. In addition, we set aside 1% of the electric gross revenues to underground overhead electric distribution lines. You currently have a balance of approximately $3.7 million in your account to take overhead lines and have us underground those for you. The franchise agreement will supersede the prior franchise that became effective in 1986. This new agreement, as I mentioned, is a significantly improved agreement for Commerce City, and essentially, you have the benefit of about 18 months of negotiation between Xcel Energy and your legal team and others, others that commented on the agreement from the city, as well as you benefit from several years of negotiations with other cities prior to our beginning negotiations with Commerce City. So essentially, the benefits that the other cities will have received, we transfer those and bring those forward to the next agreement. So it's a very, very robust agreement, I believe. A few of the examples of the benefits that Commerce City receives as compared to the existing franchise agreement are the franchise fee audit provisions, which require Xcel Energy to conduct an internal audit at the end of the third year of the franchise to determine the correctness of franchise fees paid to the city. When pruning or removing vegetation, it shall be accomplished in accordance to the best management practices developed by the International Society of Arboriculture. That's another benefit of this agreement. Number three, a section on undergrounding performance requirements when we are requested by the city to place our electric distribution lines underground. This section has design and construction and restoration requirements. Also, the city may request an independent audit of up to two projects in each calendar year. That was not in the former agreement. A section requiring the Xcel Energy and city to coordinate our construction projects to achieve the orderly undergrounding of company facilities. In other words, we don't want to come through and underground our facilities right after you've paved one of your roads. We would do that hopefully beforehand and work in conjunction, especially if you're widening a road or doing something with your infrastructure. It also has an environment and conservation section indicating we will pursue carbon emission reductions, and we will offer conservation programs for cost-effective energy efficiency improvements, all per the terms of the franchise. So in conclusion, we thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and we remain available if you should have any questions.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions for Mr. Gibson? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your presentation. Now, you're still wanting to go forward and put this on the ballot, right?
For the... Yes, we are. That's going to go on the ballot at the general election in November.
And if this fails, then what are the cons to this if it fails?
If the franchise agreement fails, then we will no longer have a franchise agreement with Commerce City.
And then as far as any taxes or fees associated with, as it's going on right now, we would not receive in the future?
You would not receive the benefits of the franchise agreement, which are many, not the least of which is the 3% franchise fee that we collect as a surcharge, and then remit that as a pass-through to the city, as well as the 1% undergrounding fund that we, that currently, I think, has, as I mentioned, about $3.7 million in it.
Okay.
That's not true.
Mr. Moreno?
So, I don't know if this is a question, thank you for that. I don't know if this is a question for our legal team or for Mr. Gibson, but if the allowance to grant a franchise fails by a vote of the citizens, that doesn't mean Xcel Energy stops providing service to our citizens, correct? It just means that we don't have the franchise agreement with Xcel?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gibson, I appreciate the information that you provided in your email before about how much of Xcel's business goes to local contractors.
Yes.
And would very much appreciate if you worked with our Economic Development Department or maybe our Business Association to do the procurement training that you had mentioned in the email.
We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Bullock?
This might be a question for our legal team. If the franchise agreement did fail by a vote of the citizens, that doesn't stop us from issuing our own fees and everything to Xcel for the use of our easements and right-of-ways. Is that correct?
That issue would have to be resolved at the time in the event that the election to pass the franchise failed. There are certain things that the city could charge, but there are certain things that the city could not charge, and tonight is not the time to discuss the pros and cons, because we're all optimistically looking forward to this franchise passing. If it doesn't pass, there are going to be some severe legal issues involved as to what to do next.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Gaylor, could you tell me again the term of the franchise that we're currently agreeing to?
This is a 20-year franchise.
20-year, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, thank you for coming in this evening, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify in favor of or in opposition to ordinance 1919? Seeing no one else, I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney read the title?
Title of ordinance 1919 reads, "An Ordinance Approving and Adopting Franchise Agreement Between the City of Commerce City, Colorado and Public Service Company of Colorado."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, it's approved unanimously, eight to zero. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1887. It's an ordinance on second reading. Ordinance was approved unanimously on first reading, however, some minor revisions were made. Both versions were in your pocket. Does Council have any questions or concerns regarding the revisions? Mr. Moreno? Mr. Bullock?
Ready to make... Wow. Approved the ordinance?
Before we go to ask for a motion, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Council on the ordinance that did not get the opportunity during the first reading? Seeing no one, I'll ask the Council for a motion. Mr. Bullock? Oh, I have one lady. Please come forward.
It's a guy.
Oh, no, it isn't. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Beth Barta, 10094 Telluride Street. I'm aware I was here last time, but I was not aware that there were revisions, and I wondered if those could be briefly reviewed.
I can make sure the staff can give an update on that real quick.
That'd be great.
Mr. McBrough?
And one thing I wanted to clarify first, on June 4th, there is a first reading of a number of Land Development Code amendments unrelated to oil and gas, a separate set of amendments. So just clarify that.
Okay. Oh, it's not? Okay.
This is a different set of Land Development Code amendments.
Is that next?
Yes.
Okay, I might be back.
Now, we can, we could still summarize, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, what was changed in ordinance 1887.
Would you please? I think that's important for the residents that are here this evening.
Good evening once again, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify this. In the information that was included in the first reading, there was an unfortunate omission of some, the substance abuse treatment facilities, and specifically for an outpatient type of care. In all of the study sessions and all of the recommendations from Planning Commission, so on and so forth, it was recommended to be a use-by-right in C3 and I1 and I2. Unfortunately, as part of the creation of the ordinance 1887, it appears there was an unfortunate cut-and-paste error where the previous requirements for a conditional use permit in the I3 was included in there, and so the revision is to go back to what was originally provided to Planning Commission and City Council for the C3, I1, and I2, the use-by-right.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldonie, did you have a comment?
No, just to make a motion.
Mr. Bullock, you already had your light on to make a motion. You want to make that motion?
Yes. Move to approve... 1887. Move to approve ordinance 1887 with the revisions.
On second reading.
On second reading.
Mr. Macaldonie?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on second reading, including the, regarding the revisions. Will the attorney please read the title?
Yes. The title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of the Land Development Code."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that it's passed unanimously, eight to zero. Next item on the agenda is also an ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 1891 was approved unanimously on the first reading, however, counsel voted to direct the staff to prepare an amendment. Will the city manager and city attorney address the counsel regarding the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if I might begin, and I'll ask Mr. Gaylor to jump in as necessary. First of all, to clarify for anybody here listening in on this item, the proposed language in the oil and gas land development code amendments are the same as what was presented at first reading. There have been no changes to the ordinance as it was prepared and city council reviewed on June 18th. That's the first clarification I want to make. The language in the ordinance, what's being proposed in terms of updating our regulations pertaining to oil and gas are the same as what they were at first reading. There have been no changes. Subsequent to approving the ordinance on first reading, Mr. Moreno did enter a motion, there was support, it was unanimously approved, that did request that staff prepare an amendment to the language that could be considered at second reading. And the direction was to provide an amendment for second reading of ordinance 1891 that would allow residents within the notice area of a pending oil and gas permit to appeal to the administrative judge. We have some alternatives for city council to consider to implement that change. However, what we would recommend is that city council consider approving on second reading tonight the original draft of the amendments that was proposed on June 18th, and that this change be considered at a study session, perhaps as early as next week, July 9th. There are a number of different ways of making this change to the language that I think are going to require a fair amount of city council discussion, and we didn't think it was appropriate to try and do that as part of the discussion tonight. So we're committed to bringing back those options to you, but we think it might be more efficient to approve the ordinance as it was originally drafted. Consider this change to the appeal process as an amendment to ordinance 1891, if that makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Gaylor?
Yes, I'd like to just reiterate the point made by Mr. McBroom for the benefit of the audience in particular. The motion that was made by Councilman Moreno talked about an appeal from any decision that was made administratively. And when we started to draft that kind of a provision, we realized that there are several options as to how to handle the appeal. One is to have the appeal just go to an administrative judge. Another possibility is to have the appeal go to the city council. Another possibility is to have the appeal go straight to the district court. And when we considered those options, we realized that this would involve an extensive discussion that we should take up with the city council in a study session. So as Mr. McBroom has recommended, and staff as well as myself, we're recommending to the city council that you adopt the ordinance as drafted, and then in the study session, we consider these options with you and weigh the differences, the pros and cons, and then bring it back, if you decide to do so, in a new amending ordinance to this ordinance 1891 that would include provision for the appeal process. So that's what we're recommending this evening. That way, this ordinance will be approved on the books, and then we can deal with the amendment at an upcoming meeting of the city council.
Okay, thank you. Since there was considerable audience input on first reading, I'm going to ask if there's anybody who would, who is not allowed to speak at first reading, if they, if they would like to speak now, please show, show me your hands so that I know you want to speak. Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I wanted to address something that Mr. Gaylor said.
Yep. One moment, and I'll give you the opportunity. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cliff Wilmington from Lafayette, 1246 Dork Drive.
Thank you.
My name is Cliff Wilmington. I'm from 1246 Dork Drive of Lafayette, Colorado.
Welcome.
Thanks. I was entirely unprepared to speak tonight. I'm here visiting from another community that is facing oil and gas exploration, specifically hydraulic fracturing. I'm not speaking as an expert on this. I am not a hydrologist or a geological physicist, but I am a member of a community that is bordering the gaslands of Weld County. I've learned about this issue in a crash course over the last two months, and looked at it quite closely in those two months, and found that there is an enormous fast track being pushed onto the front range right now by the oil and gas companies. And my question originally was, why does fracturing need to take place right now so quickly, clearly without any kind of democratic consent from the communities that it's affecting? And the reason has become obvious that it has been legislated into this kind of exploration that the scientific input from the groups like the Environmental Protection Agency and other kind of independent studies has been legislated entirely out of the process. So if you're close to Erie, Colorado, like I am, you will see that the oil and gas industries are trying to establish wells as fast as humanly possible because the problem is right now that the evidence against this kind of industrial activity is seeping out, and it's being shown to be highly toxic, highly environmentally dangerous, that has an enormous involvement in industrial chemicals, neurotoxins, and this sort of thing. So really, the reason I'm here tonight is as a neighbor, I've had to watch Erie, Colorado, surrender itself to this process that is basically being pushed on it by a group called Incanna that does not consider the, the community sediment at all. You can see pictures online that shows it drilling right next to Red Hawk Elementary School. They clearly do not have any kind of concern for the health of the kids and the families there. And I should also point out that it's become recently available that the oil and gas industry has contracted the same, it's Hill &amp; Knowlton, who's the public relations firm that also asserted that tobacco smoking was totally harmless. They've been doing this for sixty years, and this is the same firm that is now telling us for the natural gas exploration companies that this process is scientifically sound, that there are no health effects. But we're all being subjected as the front range to the same kind of process. And I would like to at least encourage Commerce City as a neighbor, because there are no filters between our air, to consider a moratorium on this until some real hard facts come in and people are made aware of the, the safety impacts of this, this process, and that it can at least be held accountable to the Clean Air Act, Safe Drinking Water Act, those kind of neutral environmental laws that all other industries are liable for, and that somehow this, this industry has gotten legislated completely out of those kind of responsibilities. It's a big question as to why they need that kind of exemption. So that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't get a chance on the first reading to speak that would like to speak tonight? Seeing no one, I'll move to the council. What are the council's desires? I have a lot of lights lit up here. Mr. Douglas, excuse me. Mr. Gaylor, do you have something to say?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, that the citizens deserve to know the approach this city council has taken for those who may not have heard it previously. And that is, is that the very, for the very reasons this gentleman has just stated, this city council is moving forward with this ordinance because without this ordinance, we don't have the controls and regulations that he's speaking of. With this ordinance, you have provision in the process of air monitoring, water control, water quality control, noise control, odor, all those things to be considered in the process. And that's why it's so important that this ordinance get passed because you reach some point, you've had a moratorium in effect now for several months. By extending this moratorium for an indefinite period, for example, you run the risk of some court saying that you're using the moratorium as just a sham to prohibit the fract, the hydraulic fracturing. And the Greeley case, decided sometime ago by the Colorado appellate court, says that an outright ban is not permitted by local government. So we're avoiding that issue, and we're moving forward with this ordinance that will address the very concerns that have been expressed here this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Am I lights on to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance 1891 as it's, as it's been read.
Okay. I have a motion to approve ordinance 1891 on second reading. Mr. Bullock?
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Benson?
Yes, I just wanted to address the issue that's going to be taken up in an amendment. You know, on first reading, I brought up the issue of who had the standing to cause an appeal. I know you only addressed who was going to hear the appeal, like an administrative law judge, the district court, whatever. My concern was, can an individual citizen initiate an appeal if they don't like the outcome? Is that something that's...
That'll be discussed as part of the study session because that goes hand in hand with who can appeal the standing issue, as well as to whom the appeal is made. So that'll be all part of the discussion with the city council.
If both of those are...
Great. I have a motion and a second on the floor on ordinance 1891 as it's written. If there's any discussion concerning the ordinance, that's what we're looking for. If it's outside of that scope, then we will, we'll talk about it later. Mr. McAlton?
I had been prepared to make the motion as well. I just wanted to make sure that the motion going forward tonight acknowledges the, the point made by Mr. McBroom and Mr. Gaylor regarding dealing with the amendment via a study session. Not, not discounting the fact that the amendment which was raised and approved in the last vote gets specifically called out as a, a task to be accomplished in an upcoming study session.
I think that's appropriate. Would the motion maker like to include that within the motion for approval of ordinance 1891 to also pursue the amendment with the staff?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, rather than cloud the issue as to the passage of this ordinance, I'd recommend that we pass this ordinance and then have that as a separate motion after this.
Makes sense. We'll do so. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, read the title, please.
Title of ordinance 1891, "An Ordinance Amending Articles 3, 5, and 11 of the City's Land Development Code to Revise and Add Regulations Relating to Subsurface Extraction and Oil and Gas Exploration."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. The record showed that the motion's been approved unanimously, eight to zero. Next item on the agenda. That's right. I'll now ask if someone would like to make the motion, Mr. Moreno, to deal with the amendment?
Just on that topic, I feel like staff has sufficient direction. I mean, we, we made a, a motion to draft the amendment, which they've given us several options here. I'm not sure a second motion is actually really necessary.
Okay. What do you, Mr. Attorney, is that acceptable? You guys have what you need? Mr. McBroom?
The only question we would have is when you would like us to bring it back. We can do it as early as next Monday, which is July 9th. We had planned to reserve July 9th and July 23rd, trying to reserve as much of that time to talk about city council's goals in the broader sense, but we are prepared to do it anytime from July 9th on.
Thank you, folks, for coming in this evening. Can I say something on that? Mr. Bullock?
I would think that we'd bring it back as soon as possible to alleviate the fears of any of the residents out there, and depending on how full our calendar is next week, I would like to see next week if it's possible.
It is possible. I agree. A specific motion isn't necessary. We'll plan to add it to next week's study session agenda.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to take a, just a short pause, let anybody that wants to leave take advantage of this time, and we'll get back into the agenda. So we'll give everybody just a couple of minutes to make their way out. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I know, and I think she probably didn't know, and when I saw her sitting out there, I thought, well, maybe we should at least allow her. What you gonna do with your tickets? Did you already give your tickets away?
That way you can take them all apart.
If you lose mail?
No, if you lose one.
Yeah, well, there's a... Yeah, see, there is. Did you already delete it before you deleted?
Well, I didn't know I deleted it, but it's not there.
Is it on your... You did it on your phone?
Uh, no, it's on my iPad.
Okay, that's fine. So here's the trick. When you're in email, if you go to mailboxes, oops, come up, stick it. You have this little section up here, and you have this account down there. So you go to your see-through email and look at trash. Everything you've deleted is sitting here, and sits here until you delete it from trash. So you get sort of round two. Now, if you want, all you have to do is open this thing up, and you can save five. Oops, sorry. You get this little folder. Say, "I want to move this to my email."
I gotta apply to somebody or somehow research something, and all of a sudden I can't find it, so I must delete it.
Check your trash. Check that and that, because I've done the exact same thing. But again, it's just going back to your mailboxes and then look at the accounts and then drill it from there. And failing that, you could probably...
I think that was a short enough break. If everybody could get back to their seats, please, we'll go ahead and continue with the meeting. We're now down to administrative council business. First item is Bell Creek traffic calming. Does the staff wish to address the council on this topic? Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we presented a little bit of information to council on the results of the neighborhood meeting with Bell Creek residents that happened a couple of weeks ago. We are here tonight to present staff's recommendation. However, council action isn't required on this item. Staff's planning to move forward with the solution that was the subject of the agreement that was reached at the neighborhood meeting, but I know Mr. Clements is here to share more details about the solution.
Okay. Mr. Clements?
Good evening, council and mayor.
Good evening.
On June 4th of this year, the city council directed the staff to place this item on the agenda for report and possible action following our public meeting, which was scheduled for June 21st, Thursday. That meeting went very well. We had good discussion with eleven...
One moment. One moment, Greg. I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could one of the staff members shut the doors, please, so that we can be non-disturbed in the room?
Try to speak up.
Yeah, there's just a lot of people out in the hallway talking, and it'll make it easier for us to pay attention to what you're talking about.
We had general discussion with the group of people that were at the meeting regarding options in the presentation. Consensus of the group after that discussion was that a speed table should be installed at approximately 106th Drive and Bell Creek Boulevard. This is a elongated speed hump, essentially. It's, as Councilman Benson mentions, it's kind of like the one out in front of Civic Center, except not that abrupt. Additionally, it would incorporate with the speed table a pedestrian crossing with all the associated signs and striping. Additionally, the group discussed discontinuing the barricade setup that we had up there to set up the test series, and that the school flashers should be returned to a regular schedule for school operation only. Action that we have planned based on that recommendation is to design and construct the speed table and the pedestrian crossing, get it done before school starts as soon as possible. Our cost estimate is about $6,000. That money would be... is included in your reappropriation ordinance. That'll be considered, but we're proceeding with unless otherwise directed. We've removed the simulated pedestrian crossing, as you might have seen out there, the equipment and signs, and re-timing of the school flashers to school times only will be accomplished. Unless there's other direction requests, I'm at your whim.
The only question I have is about how long do you think it'll take to complete that project and have it in place?
I'd hate to commit other than before school starts, mid-August.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're done. There's an inlet there, a drainage inlet on that west side of Bell Creek, right at that intersection, so we're going to have to work around that and put in a concrete connection.
Okay. Thank you for the update. I'm ecstatic that you were able to get it taken care of and that the residents over there have signed off on having the speed table as the means of mitigation.
Great.
So thanks for your time, and please pass that along to all the folks in your department that worked hard on this.
Sure will, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Clements, just one question. The speed table, that will also include crosswalk, right?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Signs and those painting.
Thank you.
Mr. McAltoni?
I just... I want to thank staff again for the efforts of bringing this to a resolution. I'm glad we let the process work itself out and ultimately came back with a guidance from the community that was, I think, somewhere different than the council may have jumped to at some point in the discussion. So it was good to let this ultimately work itself out with the staff and the community. And I think one of the things that I would hope that we take from this is a look at how we control speed in similar situations and other areas in our community. It seems like one of the most consistent items I can recall after coming on council is concerns about speed in certain areas, and people wanting stop signs and people wanting speed bumps. I think the speed table is a really interesting tool. It seems to be supportable for the snow removal impacts as opposed to true or traditional sort of speed bumps. We see the benefit of them firsthand in the Reunion Park area where we've got a very significant speed table that's in place. I just was in the Bike MS event this past... or this weekend and had a "from the seat of my bike" tour of many schools and other areas, and I saw speed tables in use in Fort Collins, I saw them in use in Longmont, I saw them in use in Erie, you name it, particularly where I saw new schools. They were using them on long, open roadways that were similar to areas that we have that abut schools as a means of slowing traffic on those long runaway streets that stop signs don't tend to have any effect on. So I would just suggest that as we are faced with similar challenges down the road, this seems like a really cost-effective tool that physically slows people down, and I'd love to have us keep it in mind as we move ahead, but that was my comment. So thank you, Greg.
Mr. McBroom, you have something to add?
Just wanted to update council. Council had asked some time ago for us to bring to them in study session our current traffic calming program, talk about the techniques that we've used, the process that we follow when residents raise concerns about traffic in their neighborhoods. So we are planning to do that. Because of the July study sessions being devoted to council's goals, we pushed that out a little bit, but it'll be... Do you remember the tentative date we had?
Mid-August is...
Mid-August is what we're planning.
Thank you.
And Greg, please let your staff know that the pressure that I was applying with the staff signs was just to get us off a dead center and get something determined, and I'm, you know, hopefully it helped to push it along, but I'm glad you came up with a solution.
Appreciate the time and the effort to resolve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to begin the July study session and the July study sessions and the July 16th business meeting at 5:30 PM instead of 6:30. What are the council's desires? Mr. Bullock?
Okay, that's... I mean, that's all I need to know is why, because I have no problem with it if it's a good reason. Maybe it's because it's too hot at 6:30? Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, there are two separate but related items there. First, the easy one. July 16th, there is an executive session planned that night, so as is our typical practice on those nights, we want to start the meeting at 5:30. The July study sessions was my suggestion to the council, if there was interest in starting those two meetings earlier, it just gives us some extra time to discuss what I think is a lot to discuss over the course of those two study sessions. It's not critical. We'll still have very good productive study sessions if we start at our normal time at 6:30. It was simply my suggestion that starting an hour earlier could be time very well spent. But I also know that it's a challenge for several of you to make it here by 5:30.
And then you also have one on here for the regular meeting of August 27th at 3:00 PM.
And for that motion, there's actually a typo on the agenda. That's the night of city council's budget workshop. We'd like to start the meeting that evening at 3:00 PM.
Okay.
That's what we've done the last few years, and it seemed to work out well.
Okay, now we have the reasons why. Mr. Moreno?
I have no issue with beginning the July meeting at 5:30, July 16th meeting at 5:30. It just... I think it's difficult for folks to get here after work at 5:30 for the other study sessions, so I would recommend leaving those at 6:30.
Okay, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I... Well, I don't think the second piece needs to be motioned, but move to begin the July 16th, 2012 meeting at 5:30 PM.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I would love the second that, but I would like to poll council first before we... Because if they can make it at 5:30, I would say let's do it at 5:30. If they can't, 6:30 would be the time.
How about we do this? Since I already have a motion on the floor, we can take up the study session separately.
Okay.
So I'm still looking for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to change the July 16th business meeting from our normal 6:30 start time to 5:30 PM for the opportunity to have an executive session prior. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, let's take up the two study session issues. Is there anyone on council who has a concern of being able to get here at 5:30 PM for those study sessions that would like to continue our normal start time at 6:30? Okay? Mr. Moreno?
I have an issue on the 23rd, but that's the only time.
Okay. Can everybody else be here at 5:30?
You're talking about the study sessions?
The study sessions.
The study sessions.
We're talking about all the... No, the 16th was the regular meeting.
16th is the regular meeting going to 5:30.
And we're talking about the other two study sessions for July.
July 9th and July 27th.
July 9th and July 27th. No problems? I'm looking for a motion. Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I move to start the two study sessions at 5:30, July 9th and July 23rd.
Okay. Mr. McAltoni?
Second.
A motion and a second to change the start times of our study sessions for the month of July. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we need to consider August 27th to start at 3:00 PM. What are the desires of council? Mr. Douglas?
Three is... It's going to be tough.
Three, because that is the day of our budget retreat, correct?
Budget.
It's taking care of our budget.
I'll just have to find the time.
Yeah, Mr. McAltoni?
I was going to move to approve.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I'd move to ask to be excused on August 27th. I won't be in town.
Okay. Well, I have a motion on the floor. We'll have to take yours up separately.
Okay.
Still looking for a second to the motion. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to begin our meeting of August 27th at 3:00 PM for the means of our budget retreat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, Mr. Bullock, would you like to be excused from the August 27th meeting?
Yes, I would like to be excused by council from the August 27th meeting. I will not be in town.
Mr. McAltoni?
I would move to excuse Mr. Bullock from the budget retreat on the 27th with the provision that he be sure we know where he stands prior to his...
I will have my information to you.
Awesome.
Mr. Douglas?
Second.
A motion and a second to allow an abstention from Mr. Bullock on the August 27th budget retreat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is reports. Mr. City Attorney?
Wait. We didn't finish with administrative council business, did we?
Okay. Do you have some administrative council business?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Benson?
You know, on the Fourth of July, we've got about... The city's bought about 2,500 flags, American flags, to pass out, and I'm going to need some help walking around the stadium on that day, so I would appreciate the help of any council members that would want to help me do that. I've handed out a lot of flags in the past, and we got 2,500 this year, which is more than we've ever had. Be 20,000 people in there. Anyway, please let me know if any of you can help on that. You know, we were talking earlier about how to raise money for the $300 million that we need for capital improvements, and I'm going to ask the council's opinion about referring to the staff so that the staff can get with the QCI or get with themselves, try to figure out whether something is feasible to get on the ballot for this fall. May not be, but I just think we ought to look at it. Because we're getting close to the deadline, aren't we, Bob? What would be the deadline?
The ballot title needs August 16th.
We need to... We're... The city attorney's office is currently preparing a resolution now to call for a special election because that has to get to the...
By 16th.
By July 16th, and you are also going to draft the ballot language at that time.
Is July 16th the one we would have to have the...
That's when we have to... If council takes formal action to participate in the special election, then that is when... Then we have... That date is... Give me just a moment. But if they don't draft the language on that, then all we have to do is call the special election.
When would be the final date to submit some sort of a ballot measure?
Follow up with what Laura's saying. We have to... We're going to participate in the election, not necessarily have the ballot title. We have to let them know by July 16th.
Right.
But then by mid-August, and Laura will have the date there in a minute, when we actually have to have the ballot language in.
Mid-August?
July 27th is the last day. July 27th is the last day for us to, if we have taken formal action, to notify the county clerk and recorder in accordance with Title I. So because of our study session, work session's calendar, we have to, council is gonna, if council's gonna call a special election, that has to be done by July 16th. Um, the last day to certify the ballot content to the Adams County Clerk and Recorder is September 7th, and that's in accordance with Title I, which is 60 days before the election.
September 7th.
All right. Well, that's all I'd ask for, is just some, uh, direction to the staff to work with the, the stakeholders, the QCI, to see if something is possible to be included on the ballot this fall. It may not be, may be a bad idea, but I don't know that anybody's looked at that question directly, and that's what I would ask that we direct the staff to do.
Ms. Ram Cordero had his hand up. Did you, uh, did you want to address Jim on this issue? Ms. Ram?
Actually, if I might, uh, speak on behalf of Mr. Cordero, the presentation you had from the two chairs of the Quality Community Initiative Stakeholder Group tonight was that they intend to make recommendations, but they won't be ready till the end of the year. So I think it would be premature to simply discuss whether we should place something on the ballot this fall before the Quality Community Initiative Stakeholder Group brings back their formal recommendations, which again, won't be till at the earliest the end of the year.
And what we're talking about is a delay from now of 16 months before we could have something on the ballot if we wait until next year. I'm just saying, give it some kind of a quick oversight, is this possible? Is it feasible? Is there any chance that something like that would pass? Maybe we could get something built 16 months earlier, or a year earlier.
It's, um, it's certainly possible, we simply would not recommend it.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Benson, um, just to address that, that concern, you know, we're, we're all struggling and looking for ways to increase our revenue streams to take care of, uh, our services that are necessary. However, um, I want to make sure that we allow this process to take place, to come up with the best solution possible, and I don't think pushing it off that 16 months is gonna hurt us because in this economy, it'll be extremely hard to pass a, a tax issue, which is what I, I'm assuming they would come up with, and maybe, uh, we allow the, the economy to recover a little bit more over the next year, we would have a more successful opportunity to, uh, try to get something done to benefit the city in the manner that needs to be benefited. So I don't see it as a loss.
No, I, uh, I agree with everything that you said, I just wanted to bring that up as an option.
I'm glad you did.
For people to consider it, okay?
Mr. Douglas?
Maybe we could look at this, uh, in the study session here coming up, just throw some things out there, because we should take it opportunity, um, especially since, um, Excel is pretty much putting a bill on this one, and it's, it's a opportunity that we're gonna miss, so let's see what we can do. Um, I was gonna ask, uh, how it's going with the golf, the high schools, as far as looking into that? Where are we at with that situation?
As I recall, uh, Mr. Douglas had, had asked us to explore, um, the possibility of allowing, I believe, free golf for students that either are on the city's golf teams when it's offseason, or might be considering being on one of the high school golf teams in the offseason. Currently, uh, the high school golf teams do play for free and practice for free at Buffalo Run during the golf season. We're doing some additional financial analysis to try and get our arms around what we think the cost of providing that in the offseason would be. So it's on our list of city council action items that we'll be following up on.
Okay. And the other thing too, um, on that hill, on, on the trail that we had extra money left over, um, it's too bad that wasn't an ex, an extra three feet down, but, it does, that is, that does improve the site when you're on the corner, and which would greatly improve it, uh, more if we could get with Shea Holmes and have him move that sign that's on the east side, and put it on the west side. It still would complement, you know, what they're trying to, the message they're trying to send as far as getting traffic to their sites, but that would, uh, open up that corner even more.
Okay. Mr. McAldony?
Thanks. I, um, you know, we had the, the grand opening of King Supers very recently, and, uh, obviously the, the parking lot has been quite busy since, which is great to see. One of the things that was talked about in a number of conversations, I know with, uh, council members and staff, was the, some of the reasons why we think this store's such a good news story for the community, and also concerns in the same breath as to making sure that folks stick with shopping in Commerce City as opposed to maybe sticking with their, uh, the stores that they're used to. And one of the things that I was thinking about, I had a lot of hours on the bike this weekend, was, uh, maybe we do a postcard in partnership with Kings and Shea to the community in the, in the, uh, the surrounding area that reminds them about the opening, and reminds them about some of the things that makes shopping there different than shopping at Target at Prairie Center or elsewhere. And I think some of the things that folks have touched on is where we sit on a tax on groceries versus other communities, uh, the lack of a PIF, the lack of a TIF, uh, and, and use that card to essentially do two things, A, draw business and retain business at that new store, second, reiterate the, the unique nature in which we, uh, supported that development in partnership with Shea and Kings, because we didn't, uh, essentially tax that thing to the hilt for 25 years. Uh, it's a seven-year deal. Um, again, I, I think in the spirit of transparency and communication and all those things we keep talking about, um, and just to keep that store healthy and viable, it wouldn't be a bad idea in my mind to consider doing something like that, and if we can do it in a, in a manner that helps split the cost between those three entities, uh, maybe that's, uh, maybe that's, uh, something that they'd be into as well. I don't know what the thoughts of council are on that thought.
Brad?
We did talk about that, I think there's a lot of merit to the idea. Because of the, the cost that might be associated with that, it might be good to, to have council action on that.
Okay.
I'll, uh, I can make it a, a motion. I would, uh, I would seek to, uh, get council support to direct staff to engage the King Supers and Shea properties, uh, communities to discuss, uh, production of a postcard, uh, with messaging as discussed for distribution in the Commerce City Northern Range.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Moreno?
I, I have discussion.
Okay, so I'm trying to weed through who has discussion. Is there a second? Raise your hand, please. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to encourage people to use the new King Supers. Um, Mr. Douglas, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just so once again, we have a newsletter, and we should really put that in there, and, uh, got a page, page for it, and, uh, you know, we already, we already have costs in that as well. And, um, so I wasn't telling my reports, but I'll let you guys know now that, uh, that grand opening on Wednesday was the most ever on a grand opening, $282,000.
Awesome.
And, uh, on average, the last four days of this, Wednesday through Saturday, they averaged about $200,000 a day. So had it been a full week, it'd been over a million dollars. So, um, and I've seen a lot of people, um, who had traveled down the store I was at, um, have come down to shop, and a lot of people really love the store because there's no, no taxes right now. And, um, you know, they're, they're accustomed to that, and as far as taxes, but they know they're not taxed extra what they were getting at Target and all that, so, um, just let you guys know that. Thanks.
Jerry, we have a motion and a second on the floor to have the staff pursue a means to, uh, uh, help retain the businesses, uh, the business at the King Supers. Discussion.
Can I ask?
On that item, not anything new. Mr. Moreno?
Uh, just on that item, I, I believe the, the specific motion called out a postcard, which I don't necessarily agree with, I actually agree with Mr. Douglas. We have a, a city newsletter that goes out every month. Um, I think there's some cost savings in able, being able to put that as an item in the city newsletter, and it also reaches all the people in Commerce City and not necessarily the people just in the Northern Range. Uh, you know, we, I saw a lot of folks in Core City, Commerce City that showed up for the grand opening, and I think they would be interested in, in being part of that as well. So I, I agree with Mr. Douglas about a piece in the city newsletter.
Okay. Any more discussion on this topic? Mr. Benson?
Mr. McAldony, you're talking about, uh, sending cards to Brighton and Thornton and maybe Green Valley Ranch and places like that, right?
Uh, no.
You're not?
It was for Commerce City, is what he said, Mr. Benson.
I'm sorry, what?
It was for Commerce City, is what the motion entails.
I'll, I'll restate my concern, and, and this was a, a concern or a question I heard from several folks. Um, and at the risk of speaking on Ms. Carson's behalf, who's absent tonight, you know, one of her concerns is the folks that live on the west side of our community have well-established habits of traveling into Thornton and other locations to shop, because it's close, it's, it's much closer to them than we on the east side, if you will, of the Northern Range had in, in relation to any other store. And her concern was, even though we have this new store, those habits may be well set. And so how do we get folks to realize that there is a benefit of changing the behavior to come east instead of drive west? And so the first concern was, how do we reiterate to the community, Commerce City proper, why it's good, it's obvious to us, but why is it good to shop at that store? And then just help reinforce, again, some of the differences between why you don't want to go to Target, why you don't want to go to the King Supers in Brighton, why you should shop at the Commerce City King Supers. Um, I am, as Mr. Moreno and Mr. Douglas know, have been quite vocal about my thoughts on the need to use the city news to help message to the community, so I'm wide open to that. My only thought was that if there was an opportunity to cost share in this effort with Shea and with Kings, then that might be an additional means of reinforcing that. Um, but I certainly think that we should take full advantage of the newspaper, uh, and, and, and use that to, to the hilt. So I would be open to clarifying the motion in terms of, uh, seeking to use the city news as our primary means of that communication, but should the, uh, willingness be there in the other two parties that we explore the possibility of a reinforcement in that manner as well?
Is there any further discussion? Steve? Mr. Douglas?
I just want to add, um, just working at Kings, that, uh, they're gonna do their, their, their bit. I tell you, they're gonna give you, gonna send everybody coupons to make sure you come shop there, so they're gonna do an incentive themselves to make sure that their business that they just received continues. So, but it'd be good though for city council to reach out to them and, and think them and encourage them at that point, too. Thank you.
Do you have a motion and a second on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Staff has direction. Um, we'll go down the list on administrative council business. Mr. Bullock?
None.
Mr. Moreno?
None.
Mr. Douglas? Done. Reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is briefly review the updates, the updates that are included in the city manager's report that was emailed to you just prior to this evening's meeting. Uh, at a prior study session, Mayor Ford had asked us to research pavement conditions in the Outlook subdivision. Public Works Department has done some maintenance recently, uh, to patch some streets in several locations in that neighborhood. Uh, we are preparing a report that will go, uh, in a little bit more detail about possible causes and options available with some recommendations. Councilman Benson had asked us to provide some background information on the various, uh, sections of 104th that had required some, uh, work, uh, since that's a fairly new street, so staff is working on a report regarding the causes of those problems and the various types of follow-up actions that we've done. Uh, Councilman McAldony had asked for a study session to review for city council the city's Ask C3 system. Uh, we are looking to schedule that study session in either September or October, to both give you an update on how the system works and share some statistics since we began using the system about three years ago. Uh, Mayor Porton Moreno had asked us to provide, uh, reports and city manager updates at the study sessions as well, and also provide an opportunity at study sessions for council members to convey action items, uh, to staff, so we will be adding that to the study session agendas. Uh, Mayor Ford had asked us to communicate with residents in the city, uh, regarding the fireworks ban, and also make sure we're adequately promoting the Fourth Fest, which comes up Wednesday evening. Uh, we've included in the report a number of things that we've done to, uh, make sure residents are aware of the consequences of, of utilizing fireworks in the community in violation of city ordinance. We've also done a, a number of different things to, uh, to advertise Fourth Fest and, uh, let the community know that we'll be doing it safely. Regarding the Fourth Fest, we distributed to each of you tonight, uh, two tickets each for the soccer game Wednesday evening. Uh, as you probably know, the city has 20 tickets for each game, so we've given each of you two, which is 18, and we've got a couple of extras, uh, should there be an emergency need. If you aren't gonna be using your tickets, uh, it's, uh, completely at your discretion, uh, how you would choose to use them. Um, so let us know if you don't need them, and you don't have anybody who would like to use them, you can let us know, and, uh, we'll see if somebody might want to use them. There, there might be other council members, however, who might have an interest in using yours if, uh, you won't be using them. Uh, also, we had, uh, we had a series of emails that several council members received about, uh, early maintenance work at Pioneer Park over the last week. Uh, park staff did reach out to the resident who had the concern, uh, the work that was being done was, uh, was not appropriate, so we've, uh, talked to that resident and, um, apologized for the problem and done some additional counseling with a seasonal employee who inadvertently started that work too early. Uh, Councilman Bullock had asked us to, uh, follow up on, uh, the request to appoint two council members to the Regional Air Quality Council. Uh, Governor Hickenlooper did make an appointment. Unfortunately, uh, the governor appointed Mayor Hogan from Aurora to be the Metro Denver appointee on the, uh, on the rack. Uh, Councilman Bullock had also asked us to, uh, uh, make sure we got back to you on the per diem sheets that, uh, were filled out for each of you for the CML conference, so we've done that, and I know I've answered some side questions. If you have any additional questions about the appropriate way to reconcile your expenses, please don't hesitate to, uh, get ahold of Ms. Gallegos. Uh, we did, uh, the mayor and city council had asked us to, uh, uh, let the staff know how appreciative council was to those staff that worked on the oil and gas amendments and the neighborhood outreach, so we did that via email last week. I know, uh, the staff that I talked to very much appreciated the, uh, recognition. Uh, we are doing some additional research into the concerns from Mr. Bachmann, who is proposing to redevelop some property on 54th Place. He had some frustrations about the drainage requirements, uh, that he was hearing from the city staff. Uh, we're reaching out to Mr. Bachmann. In addition, we'd like to provide some additional background information to council in the city manager report next week. Uh, and then finally, I think this is the last one, I apologize for the, for the lengthy list. Uh, Ms. Brattler had, uh, brought up some concerns that were raised to her by another resident about vicious dogs, uh, in the area of 75th Place, and we've got quite a lengthy update in your report of some actions that city staff took to both address, uh, a concern with the fence and to address, uh, uh, the actual dogs. And as I mentioned, uh, there is a concern that one of the dogs is a pit bull and the owner has until July 6th to provide some documentation about, uh, about the animal. So, that's a mouthful, but it's important for council members to know that, uh, when we receive those action items, we take those things seriously, we, uh, we keep track of all of them, and, uh, when appropriate, we want to give you updates so that you know that we're following through.
Thank you. Mr. Gallow?
Nothing further.
I'll get into my reports. Had several meetings with our economic development department on potential, uh, folks that have an interest in our community. Um, went to Rotary, had several meetings with staff, um, had a DIA's mayor's, DIA mayor's meeting. Uh, then we had, the whole council attended a, a tour of the new King Supers. Um, I participated in a phone call case study for the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge, um, and then most of us attended the opening of the new King Supers, and I, uh, have to tell you, I, I would like to say thank you to Shea Holmes and King Supers and our residents for, for sticking it out. Um, they have the best store in the metro area, and, uh, I would, I would encourage everybody to go there and, and see that, and once... to go there and, and see that, and once, once you see it, and once you have the opportunity to shop there, especially with the fact that there were no TIFs or, or general infrastructure tax pieces used, that the taxes are a lot less than the competitors that are in the, in the area. So hopefully, it gets, gets the use that it deserves, and we're extremely proud to have that store open now. I met with Adams County, Brighton, and Aurora, myself and Mr. McBroom, on an executive session concerning, executive session concerning DIA Airport Cities. Went to a ribbon cutting for County Road 53, was an invitation from Weld County. It's the, happens to be the road in front of the animal sanctuary, and we are all given a formal tour of the animal sanctuary. There's 290 carnivorous animals at that sanctuary. It's very close, and the lady mentioned that anybody wanting to come to the sanctuary comes through Commerce City, so they want to be supportive of our community as well. And she offered to put together a tour for the city council, and I brought the information back to Mr. McBroom, and staff is contacting the sanctuary so that you all can, can get an idea of, of what's nearby for residents to be able to enjoy for entertainment. So thank you to Weld County for inviting me to that. Went to the Metro North Development Breakfast, which was here, on education and how it affects the workforce. Then Saturday, I had the great pleasure of attending a flag presentation by the Cub Scouts, PAC 607, I believe, it's the one from the Reunion area, and they have about 30 Cub Scouts. One of the things they were lacking is they didn't have a Colorado State flag. So the city of Commerce City provided a Colorado State flag, and I presented that to the, to the Cub Scout PAC at the event they held at Cherry Creek State Park on Saturday, and they also offered to provide service opportunities for Commerce City, and I think their planning, their plan is to attend our August outreach and pick up trash and try to help pick up the park afterwards. They're, they're looking for more service projects, and it's one of those clubs that we need in our community and that we need to support and help. And as a thank you for inviting me to that, to that ceremony, I told them that I would talk to the staff and see if there's any way we can try to get that PAC, that Cub Scout PAC, some tickets to the Rapids game, to show our appreciation and have them participate. But they, they want to do more in our community, and I want to encourage that. They have a great group going, a great, a great group started up there, and a lot of parent participation, so thank you to the Cub Scouts. I also want to thank our residents. I noticed that over this weekend, which is the weekend that I expected to see and hear the most fireworks go off, it has been extremely quiet, and usually, this weekend would have been crazy around, around my neighborhood. And I have to tell you, I think people are starting to see why there's a fire ban and why we have these laws, and I have to thank our residents for really abiding by those laws in, in a time where there's a huge concern. So I didn't hear a single firework go off all weekend. Now, knock on wood, I hope that Wednesday goes just as well, and with, with that said, and the lack of people I see pulling into these fireworks stands, I really expect that our fireworks display will be very well attended, given the fact that Aurora and Reunion have canceled their fireworks displays. So hopefully, everybody will come out and enjoy a very safe, good 4th of July, and participate with the city event, so that they can, they can have a good 4th of July as well. I want everybody to enjoy the holiday. So with that said, unless there's anybody that needs to add something to my report, I don't see anybody, I would just like to wish our staff and residents a happy 4th of July, and we will adjourn the meeting if there's no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City.
URA.
Oh, yeah.
URA meeting.
Yeah.
I need just a moment, please. Yep.
I'll now open the Urban Renewal Authority meeting of July 2nd, 2012. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Score?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Carson?
Teeter?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Macaldaughn?
Here.
Elliot?
Present.
Douglas?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you, let the record show that we're all here except for board member Carson, and the first thing I'd like to take up is a motion to allow her to excuse, excuse her from the meeting. Mr. Macaldaughn?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to allow board member Carson to be excused from the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. First item on the agenda is a resolution, Resolution 2012-02. Staff have anything to present to the board at this time?
This agenda item is related to the, the two actions council took previously. We're certainly happy to answer any questions if URA board members have any.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of or in opposition to Resolution 2012-02? Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's any questions from the council to the staff at this time on this resolution. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve URA Resolution 2012-02.
Mr. Macaldaughn?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Title, Mr. Mayor? Title. Mr. Attorney, title. I forgot. Title reads, "Resolution of the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City authorizing a 2012 intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City." Thank you. A motion and a second, and the title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Jim had a nay, so we have one nay, seven ayes. Please let the record reflect that Mr. Benson was the nay vote. If there be no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thanks, buddy, good meeting. Oh, okay. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of or in opposition to Resolution 2012-02? Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's any questions from the council to the staff at this time on this resolution. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve URA Resolution 2012-02.
Mr. Macaldaughn?
Second.